Entirely just as the sidewalk would, we may be able to submit that as a MPO project. Not sure how it would store. I don't know that we would even be able to submit it.
Are you trying, are you saying that unless we reduce from four lanes to three, we, you don't want to submit our DOT plan?
We, we would, we would have to revise. We would have to pull it and we'd have to meet the next round of submissions.
When's the next round?
Next year.
Well, I mean, could you not get approval and then go back and amend or is it cast, is it cast in stone?
It's gotta be, it hasn't been approved yet. It'll be approved in December. So it's going through a ranking process right now, ranked as it is, as a, as a project.
Well, I can tell you if I, if I was part of reducing that to four lanes to three, I'll get charged better than before years. I'm not for it. But that's just me. I mean, I want, I want all this to go through. I just reluctantly can't figure out how that road could sustain a loss of a lane. And I understand that, and I only won't use the term for what that middle lane is, but...
It's a multi-directional turning lane.
Oh, good. Okay. I've heard of those.
I use that word a lot.
It's a multi-directional turning lane.
Okay.
And it really is dangerous. When you come off of the ramp, people don't realize they're going to turn left. If two lanes are turning right and somebody's going to turn left, sorry, I'm eating up. The person behind him doesn't know and almost can ram into them. It's kind of dangerous.
So what, what are you saying? Are you for reducing it to three lanes?
I'm saying I'd like some expert's opinion on what's the best way to do it.
Well, the experts told you to reduce it to three lanes. So now what do you want what the experts want?
Then I want to go with the expert.
You do?
Well, I'm not an expert on traffic and I know there's a danger there because people, there's a lot of accidents. What is the number of accidents there? Do you know?
Quite a few. I mean, it's outside my office. So last, last Thursday, there was an accident at five o'clock as I was leaving. It happened right to the left of me as someone was coming out of Wall Bellamy. Yesterday, when Mark was leaving my office, I heard a screeching halt. I thought, I looked out the window to see if it was somebody rear-revving him or something. So a few months ago, there was an accident at Pollock in First that one of my employees' trucks that was parked in the parking lot got hit by one of the vehicles that was spinning out of control through the intersection. I hear screeches all day long. There it is. And DOT would agree. It's a very unsafe travel situation, the way that the speed is, is laid out. And also just the way the long corner is, it's not a lot of sight distance there. And that's something that we would address when we do the city market redesign, open it up a little bit more.
I also want to, I just want to point out that, you know, there's a big difference between what happened on Broad Street and what is being proposed here. Broad Street was a, taking it down to two lanes and you have a turning lane at intersections. And then the rest of it, you have a grass median the whole way. A lot of money spent on it and would take a lot of money to take it back to the way it used to be with four lanes. This particular project here is leaving the infrastructure as it is and re-scribing it such that in the future, if you needed to go back to a four-lane highway, all you would need to do is grind up the paint and re-scribe it back to a four-lane highway. So the capacity building ability of that four-lane highway at that point would, you would be able to go back to that model if you wanted to. Some of the things that we looked at was just from a multimodal standpoint of a lot of the traffic is, you know, with pedestrian, with bikes and vehicular, is managing a way to have all of them bolted together. And when you talk about the expert survey, you know, we had DOT's, NC DOT staff do an analysis, capacity analysis. They provided some memorandum at that time and that memorandum evaluated that street and they, they did a capacity analysis to where they determined that the current traffic volumes along NC 55 range from approximately 7,400 to 10,600 vehicles per day. The typical carrying capacity of a three-lane facility that we're talking about, one in each direction with a multi-directional turning lane in the middle, can, can facilitate up to 16,000 vehicles today. So therefore, they, they recommended that it would adequately accommodate the existing traffic. And actually, they did the analysis out to 2035 and determined that it was adequate. At that point, at a 2% growth rate, which is a typical growth rate that you would see with transportation modeling. Now, you know, I know the difficulties of making a change and things like that, but I don't, I want to make sure and understand that, that the engineering highway capacity analysis done supports either the three or the four, whichever way we choose to do it. But the difficulty, like I said, is, is, you know, we've already submitted this through for scoring to DOT based on the direction that we got from the board as we're submitting this project. And it's always been this, this is the same concept plan that we brought to you last year with both showing the three lanes plus the bicycle lane. And the concern is that staff's hearing that that's not the direction we want to go. So that means that we need to pull that from the MPO and revise that. And then if we need to resubmit based on...
Was the round, was the roundabout pulled when you submitted the...
The roundabout's been pulled again.
Okay. Well, I just want to apologize on my part for allowing you to proceed. I, I didn't know it was that cast in stone. I didn't know that there was going to be a reduction in, in purview surface and the four lanes was going to stay where it was. And I just figured it, I didn't know it was so cast in stone that the thing couldn't remain four-lane. I should have been more attentive.
Plus the bicycle lane. That's, bicycles coming from Pembroke. There's a lot of people use that, that lane.
For what?
Bicycle lane. And walking. I know we're going to address the sidewalk issue, but, so this plan allows for a bike lane, correct?
That's correct.
And that's what we all agreed to, where there'd be a bike lane and there'd be...
Essentially is, you know, like trend rate.
Yeah.
So could we possibly, in this, I can say this one, this means, could we possibly stay four lanes? Could we go on to put sidewalks so the bicycles and the foot traffic can use the sidewalk to pick where they're going? I mean, you going down, even though the study says that it adequately handle the traffic flow, but they're not there at the rush time of the day. They're not there at four o'clock, five o'clock in the evening. They're not there at seven, eight o'clock in the morning when there's a whole bunch of traffic there. So that's my thought, but...
Actually, I think they, they did do multiple days of study at different times. And that's the reason why they give you a range of 7,400 to 10,600 vehicles per day. So that accounts for those rush hour times. But to speak to your point about the bikes, you know, if you think of it from a perspective of recreational bike use where you're just kind of, you know, towing around on a little bike, you know, BMX bike or something like that, yeah, bicycle on a sidewalk is probably applicable. But if you're, I can tell you that there probably are very few, and you can talk to the fly bike shop, I guarantee you that they don't ride on sidewalks.
I mean, you're going down.
Is it legal?
I know you said that. You're right and they don't support them sidewalk however they're down.
And technically, technically DOT considers bicyclists as a vehicular, vehicular type movement. That's the reason why they have to adhere to the traffic movements of, hey, I'm turning, I'm turning right, I'm turning left, whatever. So they, they consider them to, to be intermingled with other vehicular traffic, not pedestrian sidewalk traffic.
Are you needing some direction on this item? And would you like the board to vote on either continuing with the plan that was submitted or, or the other? Is that what you need?
I'll just, I'll just add this. Mark talked to me about this about a week ago, about the issues of changing the road lane configuration. And asked me to talk to our division engineer, John Ross, who already sees, actually two divisions, I think, right now. And I talked to him Thursday about not doing the road diet. And, and he was, he was actually, he was very surprised that we would not want to do it. He's been doing this all over Eastern Carolina with the same kind of issues that we're, we're dealing with now with public perception and outrage over changing lanes. But overwhelmingly, he told me in every situation that once it was done, that the public was actually very supportive of the project to the point where, and I think in Washington, he actually just striped it just to see how it would go. He had a conversation with the mayor who was, who was against the, the changing of the lanes. And John offered to just do temporary striping down, see how it would work. And after it was down, they decided it was, it was a success for the community and they decided to go forward with the project. So maybe if, you know, we can, obviously if the board wants to vote, the board can vote. But John also requested, he couldn't be here today because I have such short notice, but he thought it might be best that he come and talk with the board before they make a decision on it. Because he actually feels very strongly in this situation due to the safety factors and all the pedestrian traffic that will be adding to this area, that it's a very needed project. I'll leave it at that.
So he would be prepared to come to one of our board meetings?
Or meet with you individually or whatever. Yeah.
Would they be prepared to put down temporary striping?
I don't know.
Should we find out how many of you, are there any of us that are, are four just going forward? Or are there enough of us prepared to go?
How many are, are going forward with, with the plan? I mean, I'm, I'm open, I'm open-minded. I mean, I'd be glad to hear what Mr. Rouse got to say. I'd be glad to temporarily stripe it possible. But I guess I'm just old school.
I guess, I mean, and really maybe that's, that's what, in a sense, you're, you're sort of are doing anyway. I mean, that's, that's what...
Just striping.
The only thing, the only thing is we're not going to assist in the resurface, resurfacing. So if the board wants to try it out and, and do that, I mean, that's, that's, we're not changing anything from curb to curb, other than the lane configuration. But we can talk to DOT to see if that temporary striping is a possibility.
Part of my concern here, in the day that we went over there, Mayor and Mark, all the kids and myself, just walking down that sidewalk and the speed of vehicles coming off 70 and it just seemed like it was moving awfully fast. I have concerns about the safety. And if I understand this correctly, the lane changes that we're, that we're thinking about in this road diet, or what do we call it, vehicle, whatever, is basically to accommodate bike lanes and to try to facilitate some particular traffic movements at that Lawson Creek and traffic calming.
I think it's, I think it goes right at the point that you just made, is people drive too fast on that road. So when you do this type of traffic calming, which is a rest, re-striping configuration, then it's going to potentially slow traffic down.
But I think in certain instances, at certain times, special, or special events that you're going to have, not only congestion, but you're going to have a lot of motor vehicle frustration, so to speak. And that, and that's a concern. And here's the other concern with this, is we're talking about a specific area. And what concerns me is the transition beyond that area. As an example, where would the bike lane that would be on the market, the property side of Country Club, how far does it go? It goes over 70? And, and then where does it wind up? Or does it?
Uh, we do a start. We would, we would probably, I mean, at some point or another, it's got to merge on the Country Club. I mean, we've got no control over that unless you might just widen the entire city. But I mean, we've got no control to take. So at some point or another, which is common, you have a convergence of vehicular traffic and the bicycle traffic.
Okay. And I think we're trying to appeal to the more, what I would call professional cyclists that are going to ride, you know, at a faster pace. They've got the, no? Or are we just talking about leisure?
Honestly, that was, I'm not trying to appeal to anyone other than...
No, I understand. But we've got to appeal to, I think, some different constituents. Part of my concern is we've got, we've got right lane, turn lane, going across 70 there. You've got the ramp that goes down. We're talking about cyclists coming across. How are we going to manage that?
That's a, that's a major bike lane now. And that is a major bike path.
You know what? All the times, I don't think I've ever seen a cyclist. Maybe certain times in a day, you're there.
It's very, the problem is, it's hard to explain, but when you're coming out of Pembroke and two people are turning left, are turning right, this, and there's somebody behind the car doesn't realize this guy's going to turn left. And that's what happens all the time. Like they're turning left to go to Temple Baptist. So then everybody backs up behind there. And then they quickly switch over to the right to get around. Whereas if you had a turning lane there, everybody would stay in the right lane and those turning would be in the middle lane, which is what the engineer...
Well, I think, I'll tell you this. What I, when I think of the engineer, DOT, design road management system, I think of Five Points. And that is a very poorly designed, does not, did not anticipate any traffic growth. Where you've got two vehicle capacity for a left turn lane there at Five Points. And what winds up being is a roadblock.
But here you would have a whole left, you have a whole turning lane the whole way around.
How many, how many vehicles can you put in that, in that lane from between there and 70, the off-ramp? Not that many?
Not that many. I think what we all do here, I think we could talk till six o'clock this evening about this issue. And I really think we all get Mr. Rouse down and, and, you know, for regular board meeting.
Or workshop.
And time is of the essence. But, you know, we're going to talk about that the rest of the day. We don't, let's just all agree that we need to get Mr. Rouse down and really talk about this. Now, when would you want to do that, Mr. Stevens? When's...
Let's look at, let's look with the, talk with John Rouse, find out what his availability is, whether that's the next meeting in March or the first meeting in April. What does she prefer, whether it's...
I think you got the pulse of the board. A lot of us have a lot of concern about reducing the number of lanes. We are open-minded to the discussion. And if somebody can educate me where I'm missing it, I'm open-minded to anything. But somebody's going to have decent convincing. And probably don't need to say much else about it. Let's go to the next thing.
Okay. So the next one, we have brought before the board before. And obviously, as we continue to process lots of property that is for sale by the city or available by the city, we want to discuss once again the bids. We're going to express our desire to discuss minimum bids for certain properties. You know, we've gotten certain comments here in some of our board mem, board meetings about how much the city spends on advertising and so forth and so on. So in the interest of trying to reduce what that costs. And then I'll give you a prime example. We had, what is it, $4,000 piece of property that was an offer on it. It actually was, it went back and forth eight different times. So it was advertised eight times. And generally speaking, with Eddie Paper over there, it's costing us $250, roughly $220, something like that, I think.
Somewhat in that close.
Some of them are close to $300 for us to advertise that. Well, the additional deposit fee at that point would be, what, 200? I mean, the deposit would be 200 some bucks, I think. And then we had, so in a sense, our cost of the deposit, in often cases, is not even covering the cost to advertise should that person walk away. Like happened with 1021 Lee's Avenue just recently, which you just approved the actual sale of. But back in 2005, July, or 2015, I'm sorry, July, 2015, the person bid on it was the highest bidder. We go to try to transact the property and close on it, and they couldn't close on it. So then it cost us, and that one cost us a good bit more. So...
What do you keep? The $500 or something like that? Just keep the money?
We do. But like I said, when it goes, when it goes back eight times to advertise to get to whoever the highest bidder is, it's costing us money, a lot of money.
I think the biggest issue here is, is the prominence of these folks, they're buying this property. Are they putting it to good use and putting it back on tax books to where, are they improving it to where we're getting over a 10-year projection period, any type of anticipated increase in revenues? Or how's that?
Well, obviously, the proposed revenues, I mean, when you got a $4,000 vacant piece of property, you're not, I mean, your proposed revenue is going to take a long time for to repay.
I'm not talking about where it stays. Back in, probably if they put a house on it.
Oh, no, it's like $500.
There's a home on it, just it's like $500, pretty much. So, but just what we pass out to you is, Jeff provided a memo. We have been tracking what we are selling these properties for, what the tax valuation is on the properties, as well as any kind of cost that the city has in these particular properties since July of 2015. Jeff, you want to go over your memo and what, what we have planned?
I'll go over it really quickly. I used a sample of 14 properties that we've gone, that we've put through the process in the last 13 months that have gone through our upset bid process. We've sold 24 properties over the past five years. But obviously, as we've been marketing them more over the past year, we've done a lot more. So I took that sample and just kind of figured out what, how, how is that shaking out? What has been the final price? What have been all the costs associated with that? And how is that related to tax value? Because that's pretty much what we look at when we're trying to value these properties as we move forward. So as you look, and generally speaking, well, the final sales price of these properties, these 14 properties, was about 23% of the tax valuation. So as we know, we've been talking about what's a good percentage or do we have a minimum bid? Where do we start? What's a good number? The market told us these things are selling for 23% of the tax value. If you include all the city costs in, in our number, it's about, it's come, their total city costs as a percent of tax value is 52%. So we're getting a higher number. If you look up, we sold 14 properties as an average of $3,400 of property. But we have $4,000 of cost in the properties. So we're, you know, in general, we're losing $600 on each one. So when you look at it, again, as a whole, if we're looking at establishing minimum bids, you look at the last two sections of my memo. If you just want to go with the 25% number, that would be consistent with what the market has told us, 23% of the tax value. But if you really want to recoup all, all the, all the costs, a more appropriate bid would be somewhere between 50 and 75%. As I did the analysis, you'll see on the next page, when I took out some of the major outliers that we had in costs, you'll see that some of the costs were 200%, over 200% of the tax valuation. And some were less than, than 2%. So I took out some of the higher ones just to get a more, less skewed, I guess, average when we're trying to average that out. And that was about 50%. So you had 50% and 23%. You get about 75% altogether as a, as a minimum bid of tax value, if you wanted to move forward with that. So really, it's just some data to make a decision on. If we just want to start with just regular tax value, or if we want to try to recuperate costs, it'd be more, you know, appropriate to maybe request that we look at bids of a minimum 50% of tax value, or if we just want to do a 25%. Or if we just want to keep moving forward with what we're doing and just taking what we get. But we do have some more valuable properties coming online in the future. And it would be helpful to establish some kind of minimum bid.
Charles, have...
Does the statute allow us to have a public sale or an auction? And then we don't have to go through this process? So we could designate a Saturday in the middle of the summer, we could advertise them, hey, numerous having a big auction on all their surplus property, auction them off and be done with this?
No, the statute's only, this is how we dispose of property. It allows us only a couple of different ways to do it. The minimum, the subset bid process is most widely used. And then like some of the way, if we establish redevelopment tickets or something like that, it gives us a little more flexibility in disposing of property. But it doesn't allow us to dispose of, to my knowledge of, just put on a website and go through a process. I guess, I mean, you could automate it, you know, just have a 10-day, every time somebody upset a bid on a property, it just automatically extends itself another 10 days.
Or still having to advertise this one.
We're still having to advertise, yeah.
You do it through God deals, pinch, because I'm...
Yeah, but the process is still the same. Yeah. I mean, you still have, you have a winning bid and it has to be upset. You have a winning bid and it has to be upset. So it's just automating what Brenda does.
I think where Mr. Oates is going somewhat, is there things that auctions that motivate and create urgency that are not in this process? And I think if, if the city somewhat, if we are concluded from doing that, if we at very least, on our own created some motivation on part of cleaning up and somewhat stabilizing of a property as to where it gave a potential buyer an opportunity to see something that, that they don't normally see the way we let these properties just sit here with all the firm maintenance. One question I do have, one thing I don't see here is, and it does change from property to property, is the pro-rata formula of what the county gets and the city gets out of this thing. And that varies. And so even though something sold for $4,000, I don't really have in front of me that, that average mean...
I think that prime, one prime example was that one that we had that was only urgent. We got like $200 or something like that off. I think it might have been like $26. And it cost us $300 to advertise.
So, so on this, you know, this take for example, like the first one, it sold for $4,000. Now hypothetically, I think you want to think we get $2,000 of that. That's not the way that formula works. And so let's figure we got $1,800 of that. So, and you got $1,400 of course, but that's not always the case.
Yeah.
I have a question. If we, if we make the minimum bid too high, people will bid on that. And isn't the goal to get rid of the property?
Correct.
Hey, what we need to do is come up with a number that...
Advertise every time. If the initial bid's $500. And we all know it's going to go to 30,000 because it's a home. We're in the middle having to advertise this.
So is it possible, if we can, can we do it like this? Let's say we leave that 25% plus cost, city cost.
That's a good idea.
Let's say Dallas come up and be at $10,000. So you tell Dallas, okay, you'll do with the process. But on that, city cost. So that goes into, instead of him paying $4,000, they pay $5,000 on it.
I think we're missing, missing a viable point. And it's a very difficult, difficult one to deal with. And that is, you may have some idea, you may not, in terms of the buyers that acquire these properties. And that is the intended purpose.
This is what the data has told us, how, how it's panned out, how the markets responded to what we've been doing. This is, this is it. And we don't need to make a decision. We're under no obligation to do this. It was just something that the board's talked about for a while. We didn't have enough data for me to really give you anything. So this is just what it's panned out.
The one to kind of look at here is the October 27, 2015 sale. That's the 3022 Madison Avenue. You know, the tax value on that's $62,530. We're currently at a sales price of, is that, is that 11?
Eleven, eleven one eight.
Okay. So I think it's up to like 13 now. We're, so our advertising cost, as you see there, is already almost 2,000. Well, it's going to be $2,000 by the time we advertise it for the 10th time. So as you can see, we're at 11,108. We haven't even reached 25% yet. And we've had to advertise it 10 times. So as we as staff, number one, we're looking to maximize your staff's time as far as their daily duties. And we're also trying to minimize the cost of taxpayer money in doing these processes so that we can get, you know. So, so that's the reason why I'm before you and what...
Just talked about stuff in general. But is there not a instrument or a vehicle by which we could somehow or another get these without having to go through that, get some, get some measure of compensation instead of them building new houses rather than having them go in and rehab? I mean, I'm thinking about the house behind Ebenezer President Clinton, the window. But there's something structurally wrong with the house.
Habitat's not interested in rehab.
Is there any other agency out there or anyone else that we've done?
Not a standalone agency. I mean, right now for our CDBG program, we have 12 and working on 13 rehab projects with owner-occupied housing in CNI area. So we'll have that, we have that program going on.
These are all vacant, are they not?
No, no, no. These are owner-occupied.
No, those are. But the ones we sell them here, they're basically...
The majority are vacant, correct.
Jeff, can CDBG funds be used for the properties that we own that are vacant?
If they're in the CNI area, there's a chance, yeah, absolutely.
So we could go out and contract with a builder to rehab a house? And then we could market the house and probably make a lot more than what we're doing this way?
Yeah. I mean, that, it's an option. I don't know how much we're going to make. You know, I, I sit back and kind of let the market tell me what's a good idea and what's not a good idea. The fact that we tear down 25 houses a year... The fact that we tear down twenty-five houses a year tells me there's probably not a real market for this in there. These houses are, they're going to take twenty, I don't know, you know?
Would it be possible to come up with?
I don't know if we want to get into that business.
What about if we just said twenty-five percent of the tax value plus five hundred dollars carrying cost, which would help us get rid of, instead of trying to recoup exactly? I agree with Alderman Taylor, we should try to recoup something, but it'd be a lot easier formula. The person doesn't, if they say, I'll agree to the cost, they don't, like, here's eighteen hundred dollars, they'd be agreeing to eighteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Whereas if you just tap the number onto it, just to start, the whole process starts at twenty-five percent plus five hundred dollars cost.
And I'll have to check with legal on the plus five hundred, but the twenty-five percent? We need to check on that, because the deposit now is a statutory formula.
Yeah.
So we will have to check to see if Scott, if Scott, if that is allowable for a city to require that, or if we would have to do local bill legislation to be able to afford us the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, or they could just do twenty-six or thirty percent, and then not even get into that. Like, twenty-six percent would be twenty-five percent plus one percent carrying cost base.
If it was one percent on a two thousand dollar offer, it's not.
Doesn't do it.
And then, and then again, because of the way, because of the formula, we'd need to verify that with, with legal to see if, we would have to get the county to agree to that as well on some of those jointly owned properties, because as of right now, the formula is that they have to put down a certain deposit amount, a certain down payment, and then when it's sold, they get a percentage, we get a percentage, but there's no stipulation in there about advertising costs and everything.
So I've got a question. If, if, if most of these properties that we approve, upset bid process, a percentage goes to the county, a percentage goes to the city, but we are the only one that's paying the advertising fee?
Correct. Explain to me why. The county prefers their interest. In lieu of dealing with what we deal with, the county just gives it to us, you know?
In some cases, but I think Scott also tries to recoup some of those advertising costs from the county as well, he built them all together.
Well, I mean, as in cases, what was fixed in days in, that the county definitely was, got their share, is that not true?
Correct, yes.
So I mean, that's example, particularly commercial property where, when it's not in their advantage, they probably.
Correct, yeah.
So when it is in their advantage, they have their part.
Is there, is there, Jeff, in your database, if you could build a formulation that the minimum bid would be generated by whatever criteria we give, and just say the criteria would be to cove all advertising costs, where it's not actually costing us, and then put it on top of that, or is that, I could build that, and that's easy?
That's my recommendation, same thing.
I mean, we shouldn't be paying people to take property. To me, that's just ridiculous.
And that's the reason why this is before you do that.
Yeah, I would say, like I talked earlier, twenty-five percent plus paying the cost for advertising.
Yeah.
Because if you put it up to fifty, fifty percent or seventy-five percent, if I see a property that's sixty-two thousand dollars, and you tell them I got to pay you fifty-five thousand or fifty thousand for the property, and the property ain't worth for five thousand, I'm not going to waste no twenty dollars, that kind of money. If it's twenty-five percent, pay back and work with it.
Suppose you just made it thirty percent, and that would recoup our cost, would recoup the, that would, if we said thirty percent minimum bid, that would recoup our advertising cost?
Depending on the lower one.
Depending on the cost of property, value of property.
Well, it's a number, at least, instead of having to go back.
Yeah, I mean, I'll look into if we can actually just recoup the advertising costs, specifically somehow, in the process.
I know that Alderman Odom has had a lot of concerns since he first came on the board. I know that a lot of these properties are within, they're within Alderman Blackson and Alderman Taylor's ward. And I would like to possibly see an ad hoc of these three Alderman meet between the city attorney, the county attorney, Ms. Rosieri, the city manager, and see the missing link of how we're letting these properties go for nothing, and what other marketing means and auctioning means are available, that this city is missing out on a lot of opportunity to make more money and put these properties back into better uses to where, not only do we sell them, but we, we work with whoever found them to make sure that it's the proper fit and mix for that particular neighborhood. I mean, there's examples, there's one Alderman Kenzie, not too long ago, right? And I just think, I think it'd be a great opportunity for you guys to report back to the full board what your, what your research shows, if you want to do that.
But in the meantime, could we come up with, to staff some direction, at least a minimum, so they're not faced with, until the committee meets?
Sure, I mean, I'll vote, I'll vote with you on it, but knowing that it's not going to probably, it's going to be something else survives within a year's time when we find out.
Well, at least it saves some time within the year, because it's going to take you guys some time to come up with the.
Is that your motion?
Sure.
What is your motion?
I don't know what percent, I'm, I'm not, I just think we want to have a percent, at least a direction to staff to stop.
Percent, your recommendation?
I think our recommendation to staff is twenty-five percent minimum bid on value of, tax value.
Is that your motion?
Sure, yes.
And do we have a second to the motion?
A second.
We've heard the motion and the second.
Sir? And then we will, as staff, we will come back and analyze this a little bit further and get together with the ad hoc and bring this back to the board.
Now, was the ad hoc part of your motion, or is that separate? Or do we want to incorporate in there?
I just want to at least set a minimum bid. I don't think we need a motion to form an ad hoc committee to study it. I personally don't know that we do.
I got you.
I agree we need one, but.
Your motion was signed by Alderman Kenzie, so let's go around and start with Alderman. Yes, sir.
Clarification on the, on the motion. You're saying twenty-five percent without attempting to capture administrative costs?
Only because it would be a legal issue, we don't have the answer to, and maybe that can be added on later.
I mean, can we just, the motions are on table.
Okay.
Can, can we just table until he gets back with information and talk to legal?
It'll be table once the motion fails, if you get a majority. Go ahead. Any other questions? Alderman Blackson.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Now, would Alderman Odom, Alderman Blackson, and Alderman Victor Taylor please be interested in getting together, and this affects your wards the most, maybe possibly Alderman White? So would you guys, so?
Get happy, too.
Yeah, thank you. And there's already been a lot of research done, Commissioner Steve Tyson, two attorneys, the board of Realtors, there's, there's a lot of folks who've already been part of that plan, okay? What next, sir?
Our transition, next item on our agenda is discussion of drainage issues in stormwater utility.
Another topic of this issue is drainage issues in the stormwater utility. What I'd like to do first is give a quick little update on the stormwater utility and some of the new federal regulations that are being imposed on the city of Newburgh. So what I'll do is I'll start by just giving a brief overview of existing stormwater utility, and then Amanda is going to kind of go through the federal regulations and what's being required by the city, and how we compare to what's being required, and then I'll come back at the end and kind of do a little overview as, as we move forward, what we should be looking into. The existing stormwater utility we have right now was created, established back in two thousand and twelve as part of the FY twelve thirteen budget. In that, in that process, we created a stormwater utility of two dollars and ten cents per E R U. With the stormwater utility, we basically just had the minimum functions that were required with that utility, basically general maintenance, routine maintenance of existing ditches, culverts, catch basins, stuff like that, and also managing a portion of the new script rules for the city of Newburgh. The Stormwater Fund, as part of this most recent budget, had a revenue of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. With that, it also had expenditures of eight and three thousand dollars, two seventy-two for debt services.
Can you explain what that debt is on?
Debt services is a couple pieces of equipment that's been purchased since two thousand and twelve, and also the Jack Smith Creek Wetland Project that was done, leading up to this.
Does that include the utility portions and maintenance of the pump station that's in the street?
No, that does not.
Thank you.
That falls under the operating, it's funded by the law.
Okay, but that's still a stormwater.
Right, that's correct.
Thanks, sir.
There are fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of shared services that are paid to the general fund. Three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine forty-three, we pay in personnel services. And just to note on that, two hundred and eighteen thousand of that is salaries, and a hundred and twenty-six thousand of that is, you know, benefits, benefits, retirement, insurance. And then the operating part of the budget is a hundred and eighty-four thousand, zero twenty-one. Of that operating budget, sixty-seven thousand of it's basically spent on, you know, fuel, equipment, utilities, you know, service charges from the garage, and a hundred and seventeen thousand of it is spent on supplies and material for repairs or improvements. Some of the items that I feel that we are kind of underfunded right now is stormwater improvements. Currently, we are budgeting sixty thousand dollars for stormwater improvements. Those improvements, this current year, we did one project with that, and that was some improvements on Edington Street. Last year, we did some improvements over on Dunn Street, where we did the improvements on Dunn Street. So pretty much, one, one small project takes up that entire sixty thousand dollars for improvements. And then the shared services, we're spending fifty-seven thousand dollars a year back to the general fund for shared services. That is about fifty percent of what we ought to be paying to the general fund, if you actually did the numbers correctly. And then the other item is the pilot, the payment deal with taxes and rent for the building that we're in, we're actually paying zero for that right now to the general fund.
Mr. Monta, I'm sorry, the sixty thousand dollars for the improvement budget, where's that fund, where are those funds coming from? The general fund?
No, that comes out of the stormwater budget. That's part of that sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, that's part of the garage charges, et cetera?
No, if you jump back, that is part of the very bottom line item.
Operating?
Correct, fall out of our operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
A hundred and seventeen thousand.
So sixty is part operating, okay.
JR, what's the, the shared services percentage for the other infrastruts?
Substantially higher. Some, they all, everything varies depending on the, depending on the fund. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the exact percentages are.
Is it twenty-eight?
It's somewhere around.
I have, in the future, it should be for this division, this department.
What JR was trying to say is, depending on the department, the allocation is different. So IT may be different than customer service, or customer service may be different than the governing board. I mean, we, the allocation of those departments depend upon the usage of the shared services within that department, based on what.
So the more employees, the more H R they pay, et cetera.
That's correct. Just, and to kind of put this in perspective of the stormwater improvement project, typical catch basin, a new catch basin replacement would be about, what, two grand, Amanda? Twenty-five hundred dollars, two thousand, twenty-five, that's one catch basin. So as you see, this whole project was set up as a maintenance-only, really, kind of fund, not necessarily an improvement fund, but, but doesn't go very far whenever one catch basin costs you twenty-five hundred dollars.
Moving forward, May, May eighth, two thousand and fourteen, the city was issued a notice from Diner that we are going to be required to comply with the phase-two stormwater discharge permit. We are given a application deadline of August first of two thousand and fifteen, that's already passed. In July of fifteen, July of two thousand and fifteen, the city actually made that application to Diner for the phase-two permit, and that permit will come into effect April first of this year. Complying with the N P D S stormwater permit phase-two is federally mandated by the EPA. And with that, we are subject to audits by both the state and the federal agencies. So now, where do we go from here? Now we've, now we've applied for the permit, we've got the permit that's going to be effective April first, you know, we asked our question, where do we go from here, what's required, and how do we, how do we stack up with what's required now? I'm going to let Amanda kind of go through the phase-two permit, what's required, get the phase-two permit, and how we, how we look for it.
So one of the things that I've done is gone through that permit and kind of looked at our existing program and what I know of it, and kind of assessed, okay, how do we rate if an audit showed up on our doorstep tomorrow? This is kind of a breakdown, just as a nice pretty picture here, basically a third of it, we'd be good, you know, they would be satisfied with our efforts. At least about two-thirds of it, that we would have issues. A quarter of that, we would have significant issues, and it is going to take effort and budget to remedy those deficiencies. When you talk about a phase-two permit, you'll hear people talk about six minimum measures, and this is those six minimum measures in the permit, and that's how every single one of them across the state is laid out. So in each one of these, I broke it down a little further based on the permit task. In, in each one of these sections, there's so many required tasks, and how many met the criteria, and how many were good, how many were fair, and how many were poor. For public education and outreach, nine tasks, we're doing pretty good in this area, five of them are good, we had some improvement with three in fair and one in poor. Public involvement and participation, doing a little better here, good for three, poor for one. Illicit discharge detection elimination, twelve required tasks, here's where we have a real deficiency showing up. Eight of those required tasks fall short of meeting the needs. Construction site runoff controls, we actually, this is one of the six measures we don't have to worry about, because we rely on the state and Washington Regional Office specifically for execution of that particular element. Post-construction site runoff controls, nine required tasks, again, seven of those need improvement. And pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations, ten required tasks, nine of them need help. So those, you can see, that's the second most needed element that needs improvement. These are the specific tasks, and I'm just going to focus on the ones that are kind of in that poor category, what is it that's really falling short? So public education and outreach, we have an identify and describe watersheds in need of protection, and the issues that may threaten the quality of the waters. So basically, this is identifying those smaller areas, those smaller watershed basins, and identifying, hey, what's wrong with those, and kind of coming up with plans to address those. So it's, it's an intensive process to go through, you have to reach out, you need to reach out to the public, other agencies, to kind of put that all together in a cohesive element. Good part about that is, if you can take it a step further and put it together as a water quality basin plan, you can then open up some additional funding sources and grants if you can apply for those and be awarded them. Public involvement and participation, we've got a good number of these, but we're falling short when it comes to providing and promoting volunteer opportunities for the public. We need to do more efforts for, you know, maybe you've seen the storm drain markers downtown, or, you know, strain cleanups, and there's a variety of different things that jurisdictions do, we're just not reaching out to our public and getting that done. And it takes organizing to get those efforts underway. Illicit discharge detection and elimination, here's one of those that had a lot in the fair and poor category. In the poor category, you'll see maintain a storm sewer base map of major outfalls. This is basically, you need to know where every single catch basin in the city discharges to. Right now, we have some storm sewer information, is incomplete and inaccurate. So if we have an incident in one area saying, okay, I know by going into this catch basin right here, I know it's going to end up here, and you can take corrective action and immediate action to make sure that it doesn't get to our streams and rivers. We lack that information currently, we need to do an inventory for that. We also lack in employing, employee training, there's a lot of employees throughout the city in a variety of different departments and divisions that are touched by stormwater, they may not know that. They may not know what they need to do in their daily operations to do it better and prevent, you know, discharges that are illegal to the streams and rivers. And the last is providing public education. The edu, public does not know about the stormwater issues, they have a very, you know, naive education on that for the most part. A lot of people think stormwater goes to the wastewater treatment plant, and that's just a fact. Again, construction site runoff controls, and just in case you're curious what this, this is a. this is erosion control. So erosion control permits are issued by the Washington Regional Office and overseen by those as well. Post-construction site runoff controls, this is, for the most part, this is those stormwater facilities that are built and then have to be maintained in perpetuity and everything that goes with doing that. Here, we're falling short in inspections. Um, this is a huge, huge effort in time to do such. Um, generally, one BMP facility will take a minimum of three site visits, a minimum of three site visits before we are able to get that facility in compliance. And again, compliance is the goal. You'll see enforcement down at the bottom, but compliance is the goal, not enforcement. Um, education materials and training for developer, a lot of our stormwater facility owners, they have problems with maintenance because the way it was designed. The only way we can change that is to educate our developers on what they may be able to do differently and better to make it easier to maintain, and that's one of the things that we need to do as well. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations, this is how we as a city do business. We need to have operation and maintenance plans for all of the municipally-owned and operated facilities to kind of, again, make sure we don't have contamination of our, our water resources, make sure that they're doing business in the right way. Also having a spill response procedure for municipally-owned or operated facilities. You know, what do we do if, you know, one of the fuel tanks just leaks, starts leaking all over the place? What do we do? What's the spill response to that? And getting that so that everybody on staff and everybody that may be touched by that understands that. Operation and maintenance for municipally-owned or maintained structural stormwater controls, if we have ponds and other facilities that we own and we do, we have about 12 of those. And to give you an idea, there's close to 200 stormwater facilities in the city, and we own 12 of those. And I mentioned earlier, the three site visits, almost 200 facilities, it's a lot of site visits. So we own about 12 of those. We don't do the best job of maintaining them. Some are better than others. We need to do better. We need to be doing this in a manner that we expect everyone else to do as well. And then again, staff training to get them educated on how they do business so that they don't have a potential pollution risk.
All right, implementation, how do we go about making sure that City of New Bern is complying with all the new script rules and all the Phase Two permit rules? Uh, one of the things we have to do is we have to bring the state's stormwater permit reviews in-house. Uh, something that's been done by the state in Washington in the past, but come April 1st, those permits will be reviewed and issued in-house. More public education and involvement, as Amanda told me, and get the, uh, the public educated and involved through volunteer opportunities and also to maintain the facilities. A good and accurate stormwater inventory. What we have now, as she said, it's incomplete, it's inaccurate. We need to take the time and invest in getting a, a good, accurate inventory. And also improving our failing infrastructure. That's, I think that's something that the board's been concerned about for a long time. Stormwater improvement projects on some of the failing infrastructure where we don't quite comply and that we just haven't budgeted for in the past. And training and education. So they're, they're, they're the six bill points. Really few for the City of New Bern is $2.010. With that $2.010, we have to comply with the new script rules and the Phase Two rules. How does that compare to other municipalities? Uh, here's a list of the other municipalities in our area that, that have to comply with either the new script rules or the TARPAM rules and also the Phase Two rules. Green Hill's a good example. They have to comply with the Phase Two rules and the TARPAM rules, and their stormwater utility fee is $4.35. You go all the way down to Wilmington, they only comply with the Phase Two rules, and their stormwater utility fee is $7.23. Uh, so, so ours is far below those. Um, you know, with that, New Bern currently has the lowest stormwater utility fee compared to other municipalities. Looking at that, City of New Bern, if, and I'm not suggesting we do, but if New Bern had a stormwater utility fee of $4, the only city that would be, uh, have a lower stormwater utility fee would be the City of Wilson. And City of Wilson currently does not comply with the Phase Two rules. Rate versus revenue, what would a stormwater increase do for revenue? As you can see on the screen, at $2.010, if it was remained the same, the additional revenues for the stormwater budget would be zero. If the stormwater rate was increased to $3, that would increase the revenue to about $287,000 per budget year. $3.50, $3.50 per year, and then increasing it to $4 would create additional revenue up to $606,000 per year. So in conclusion, what do we need to do? Given that New Bern has recently been designated as a federally mandated to meet the stormwater Phase Two rules, um, I've got, we've basically got three goals and objectives. Increasing the stormwater utility rule to do three things. It would allow us to comply both with the new script rules and the Phase Two regulations. It would also allow the stormwater division to fund improvement projects on improving existing infrastructure, and it would also allow the stormwater division to actively account for shared services, rent, and the pilot, which we're not doing at this time. So those are the three things that we, we would be doing if we increased the stormwater utility. And at this time, I'd just like to open it to questions.
What's the first thing you would do if you got an increase? What would you do with that money? How would you translate to me, tell me where that money would be and how it would be spent?
All right, the first, the first thing I would look at is, is in the conclusion, the three things we need to look at, what we need to do, what we need to accomplish. And I think the very first thing we need to accomplish would comply with the new script rules and the Phase Two regulations.
Tell me a project. Tell me how you would actually spend that money.
All right.
Where you'd start. You had a project list or an item list of things you need to do to implement. How you gonna spend, where you gonna spend that money?
With the stormwater increases, these are the positions, this is, these are the things we would look at doing. Um, the, one thing we'd have to do is we'd have to bring on a staff position. Uh, salaries, benefits, equipment, training, everything else, we'd spend about a budgetary expense of about $65,000 a year, and that would help us comply with the Phase Two rules. Uh, if we were to do an increase that would cover the shared services, the rent and the pilot, you're looking at an additional $78,000 for a total shared services cost of $135,000 per year. Uh, public, uh, public education, outreach, public involvement, you know, we'd spend, we're saying somewhere around $121,000. That's complying with the Phase Two regulations. And then the illicit discharge element, public prevention, good housekeeping, when I say good housekeeping, I mean the improvement projects that we desperately need. We would look to spend somewhere around $100,000 if we were just doing the Phase Two permit implementation, but if we were wanting to include, you know, improvement projects and that, we'd look at opening up a little more and adding another $159,000 a year. So going to the next slide. Then your question is, what would you, what would you look to do? Now, we've got a, a list of projects. I can give you a list of, you know, eight projects right there that I could spend a million dollars on tomorrow. You know, the New Street, West Street, Seabird Street, what we'd like to call the Brock Line. You know, that, that whole system over there floods every single time it rains. The system is completely undersized. It needs to be redesigned, it needs to be reevaluated, enlarged. Problems we've got over there on Elizabeth Avenue, Mark touched on it, uh, either earlier today or yesterday, uh, out there at the, what's that, Weatherstone Apartments. You know, look at some downstream, downstream drainage out there, make some improvements in there. You know, you've got flooding all over Duffy Field. And what could you do in that neighborhood? A project that's been on the books since 2012, improvements to Cardinal Drive, McCarthy Drive, uh, back behind the old dance studio. That, that floods every time it has rain. That needs to be done. The Evan Street project, everybody's aware, that's come up here recently. Uh, I've gotten some quotes for that project, and that's a, that's a $70,000 project right now that we have not gotten funds budgeted for to do that type of work. We budget $60,000 a year, and we did Edington Street this year. And now we've got a $70,000 project on Evan Street that, you know, needs to be done, that we don't have the funding for. Uh, there's other places out in, um.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was trying to understand, so if you raise the rate by $4, you raise $606,000. So that would, if I added correctly, maybe I didn't, that would include all those other projects you mentioned, like the hiring of staff?
No, we could, we would do that. The projects we would have to do in Phase.
So just to meet the minimum standards of Phase Two, you'd have to raise it $4?
No. My first priority is the screen here, this is another slide I had. My priority number one would be to meet the requirements with Phase Two rules and the new script rules.
Which is $3?
And my increase would be 90 cent increase to the stormwater budget to take it to $3.
But if we went to $4, you'd be able to entertain some of those other projects?
I would be able to look at all three of my priorities. Priority number two, drainage improvement projects. We take the stormwater fee from $3 to $3.50, and now you've got an additional $220,000 for doing some of these projects that we haven't been doing, that we've been neglecting. And then the third priority is the shared services. We take it from $3.50 to $3.75, then we can do it accordingly like we should be, accurate accounting for the shared services, the pilot, and, and, let's see, rent on the city buildings.
Matt, back to your, your slide with those projects listed, how much roughly would they all total for six projects?
Amanda and I looked at them the other day, and you're looking probably, what'd we say, a million dollars, over a million dollars?
And we were probably being a little conservative. It was definitely over a million dollars, it's probably more than that.
New Street, West Street, and Cypress Street, that's the, that's the unknown. That's a huge problem. Everything's undersized in that area. Everything from the police department on down flows out to behind the Stanley White Rec Center. So you'd be looking at improving that system from point A to the point B.
Well, and again, that's one of the prime examples of actually where we have incomplete and inaccurate storm sewer, storm sewer information.
From a financial, I have a financial question between finance and the manager and the public works. I think, I was on board when this all came up. I always thought that the original rate was a low ball to get the board on to, to do this. I think the big concern then is the big concern now is that prior to this, all this is being done by public works. So the question is, is that the original spirit of the stormwater was to do maintenance on the existing storm, storm systems in New Bern. I don't remember us ever talking a lot about capital improvements. So to me, you know, from an accounting standpoint, would you not, some of these things be public works, capital improvement projects, and the original spirit of the $700,000 be more for the maintenance? And have you thought about that, or do you think everything needs to? And to, to me, what we're doing is trying to, and we're trying to increase the rate, the stormwater rate, which, again, you, you list some, some cities and what their rates are, you left out, there's a lot of cities that don't even have a storm fund, because they run it through public works, and they don't even have one.
But I, I will add that, all these other cities that don't have them, they're going to. I, I've been contacted by probably a half a dozen cities.
Yeah.
Going into this budget season, questioning about our stormwater utility, because they're, they're in the process of implementing it now.
I got a call from Swansboro manager about doing the same. Um, just, just kind of my, my historical recollection of this, and Jordan, please come in because you were the one that led this, or one of the ones that helped lead all this charge. This was originally presented as a $4 and something utility to the board, and the board kind of made a, a, a choice at that point to make this, drive the cost down and make this more of a maintenance-only utility. That was not necessarily, we didn't present this as a $2.01 utility, but, but we ultimately tried to drive down the cost. That's when we started looking at reducing the amount of staff that was required, the capital projects that were required, and started sup, uh, supplementing it with inmate labor to help get that fee as low as possible at the direction of the board. Jordan, do that.
Very, very quick. I, I just had a couple of things. It was all talked about in, you know, after 2012, going into 2012. We feel a lot of discussion, a lot of presentation before at the time. I think that the, the general feeling was, this was something new. You know, we've been in the water and electric business for over a century. The stormwater utility was brand new. The stormwater utility concept is something fairly new. It's just been a really, developed in the last couple of decades, nationally. So the board wanted to, I guess, crawl into this, not go running full steam. So we developed a rate that let us crawl. Now that we've got three or four years of, under our belt, we understand a little more. We understand the needs of the system, the needs and wants of the community, um, it's time to, I think, start walking. So you need a rate that will support walking versus a rate, rate that will support crawling. And that's, I think, kind of the gist of the difference between 2012, where you really were just getting the infancy of this, and now you're in 2016, where you, you understand it a lot better from what needs to be done perspective and what the community wants done perspective. I think we can understand that a lot more now than we did in 2012.
And you've got a federally mandated requirement.
That's a whole different kicker, that really is.
That requires us to comply with rules because we're now designated as a Phase Two.
And I'll add to that, you know, the, for, for decades, the wastewater industry has been regulated to the point where you can't regulate it anymore. Going back to the late eighties, early nineties, as, as river pollution and nutrient issues started to be a big deal, especially here, we are smack dab in the middle of the New River estuary. Everybody, anybody that lived here through the mid-nineties could remember the stories and news, news articles, and the rivers turned to blood, and all the nice stories that came out of that. The result of that was a lot of regulation, initially aimed directly at wastewater treatment plants. Over the last 20 years, the wastewater treatment plant, just in the New Basin, the Lower New Basin, which is Kent, St. Rupert, up to Johnson Kelly, $300,000, we've invested $300 million in infrastructure improvements to reduce the nutrients we're sending to the New River. What that's done is very little to the baseline loading of the nutrients. So we've invested all that money, they've regulated the wastewater treatment plants as hard as they can, and it's really made no real net effect in the nutrient levels in the river. So they're starting to turn the focus of the regulation to the next thing that they think they can really regulate, and that is stormwater. You can see in the last decade, you've gone from really very loose regulation of stormwater, and that's ramping up really quickly. So a lot of municipalities got on at, at the infancy of that, implemented stormwater utilities. Over the last 10 years, almost everybody else has had to because the regulations that weren't there before. You, you'd have to do things now because of the federal and state mandates that you didn't have to do 20 years ago, and people are trying to figure out how to pay for that. It wouldn't surprise me that everybody in that New Basin at some point will, will end up with a, with a stormwater utility to try to find a way to fund the improvements and fund the programs that they're having to implement, much like we had to do with, you know, wastewater. But I don't see those going, I don't see that going backwards. I don't, I, I, I really don't think you're gonna sit here 10 years and go, wow, they, they rolled back the regulations, a little easier to do business. Just from the experience of what, what we went through the wastewater industry over a 20-year period, it seems like it's starting all over again with the stormwater. I mean, I, I think this will continue to be, you know, more regulation, more mandates, uh, you know, higher treatment standards you're gonna have to meet, more expansive programs you'll have to implement. So in looking forward, it wouldn't surprise me in five years, if, you know, 10 years down the road, if you don't have another level of mandate or something like that that's gonna progress. That's always out there. Now that these things are regulated, much like your, your electric, your water and sewer, you've always got the opportunity for not only your own internal issues to cause the need for more funding, you've got these external mandates that can come at any time without a lot of warning.
One of the other things too, and this goes to the priority three part, is, um, whenever you don't accurately account for the way operation of a department or a division occurs, then you run the risk of getting an unmodi, or a modified report, I guess, at that point, from your, from your auditing firms. The impact of that sometimes can be much greater than, uh, what you would think it would be because of the lending capabilities and the abilities for you to go out and do whatever you need to do from a, from a debt person. Also, um, definitely would be, the board would be looking at myself and, and JR, what are y'all doing to get these bad reports from our auditing firm? Well, this, this right here is a, you know, if you do not properly account for the shared city service as they're used, which is the IT and the HR and the administration and the governing board, I mean, you know, we pay governing board salaries out of this. Y'all spend time reviewing stormwater issues and meeting with people about stormwater issues, and that's, that, you need to properly account for that, and that's, we try to, we try to do that. Also, the payment in lieu of taxes, all the other utilities pay a payment in lieu of taxes. I don't think this one, I don't think the stormwater payday payment in lieu of taxes yet. So to adequately capture what the cost of the utility is to operate, you've got to technically charge for these because you're not gonna have a stormwater firm, a, a company out there that's not gonna have overhead costs that, you know, they have to incur to operate, that being, you know, HR to hire on the IT to run their computers so that Amanda can put up, you know, uh, uh, new programs of, of work for her staff or whatever it is. So I mean, I see all of that stuff costs, and what you're doing is burdening the general fund in that, in that respect. So that's just the, to capture that. But the, the most important part, in my opinion, of all three of those is the reinvestment into the infrastructure. I mean, this, Jordan will tell you, how many, what percentage yearly do you replace in your sewer system?
Not, not enough is, is the.
Well, all of our. Well, all of our, this, this is a new problem, this is a national problem.
You know, infrastructure has been largely overlooked for many decades. Every, every field of infrastructure could use significant reinvestment into it.
But take Jordan, let's say he's doing 2% a year, or 1%, probably wish he was doing that, I don't know. Let's say it's very minimal. We'll multiply this, this, this utility by zero, because you're doing zero. The, the, the infrastructure improvement projects, while his, it's $60,000, those are Band-Aids. This is the Band-Aid improvement projects is basically what you're doing. It's not, you know, real robust fixing the problem. It's the same thing as we've been talking about with the street resurfacing projects. You know, we can go out there and slap some chip seal, or we can slap some joint seal, crack seal on there, or we can do some spot patching. It's not the same as a reconstruction or resurfacing. And that's what you have to have, is that reinvestment into your, into your infrastructure. So we're, Matt has presented this, and obviously, like I said, the Phase II is really, is, is the big kicker for us, because you're gonna start getting, you're gonna start getting, do they fine you, Amanda?
They have a whole caveat of things that they can do. They can fine you, they can also stop all development. They can say no new stormwater permits, and with no new stormwater permits means no new development. So they, they can get very strict. Yeah, it's a moratorium, they do have the ability to do that. And I guess right now, when it comes to Phase II, we would not survive an EPA audit.
Is there, obviously wasn't here whenever this was established, but was there any thought given to a tiered system? I mean, we're charging a homeowner the same fee we would a commercial property, is that right?
The way, the way it works is we charge $2.10 for ERU, which is equivalent resident unit, which is 3,100 square feet. So we charge every resident $2.10. Each commercial property owner pays $2.10 per 3,100 square feet of property.
Let's, let me, let's make sure that we understand, we're not basing that on a 3,100 square foot house. We're basing that on a canvas of the entire city. The average, I think whenever you did a sample test of the entire city, the average user had around 3,100 square feet of impervious area, that being a residential user. So that's the reason why we established the ERU is, is the equivalent residential unit. So what we do is, that's your base to start with, which each resident is charged $2.10 on their stormwater utility cost each month. Now, if you have a business that has 31,000 square feet of impervious on their site, then that's 10 times the ERU, so they would have a $21 stormwater fee per month. So it's all based on the impervious area because that person is generating more per, more, more surface runoff from their site.
This, this is a way to look at it, is really residential homes are flat rate, and your commercial properties are, how many homes is your property? So it's, you know, how many, how many, for impervious surface, how, you know, how much impervious surface do you have? I want you to example.
So, so for the most part, it's contributory. As in, the more development you do on your site, the more impervious you have, the more your utility fees when I have. It's not a flat cost fee, except for just the residential portion.
And when we set this up, we, we kind of surveyed the stormy utilities that were existing at the time, and by and large, that was the, seemed to be the accepted model. There were some people that even tiered the residential. So you had, you know, you know, zero to a certain number of square feet of impervious surface, at one rate, and from the mid-range, and then, you know, a certain, certain beyond was a certain rate. There were very few that did that, nationwide, and I think the main reason is it requires you to physically go and measure everybody's impervious surface, which is a tremendous amount of staff time to try to do that and keep track of, as that, as that changes. And, and even doing so, you'd probably end up with very minor differences from the low tier to the high tier. So it seems like the accepted industry practice is to just have a flat rate for residential, and you do your, your commercial based on the actual allocation of impervious.
Just a comment made earlier, the President, Amanda made regarding drainage structures, there was a number that we owned or didn't own, or did that?
Talking about the actual, like, stormwater BMPs ponds, basically. The city itself owns about, actually, I think it's 13, I think we own 13, and those are, there's two out at the streets lot, there's three out of the municipal swim complex, and then they're a little bit different, like, out of the municipal, municipal swim complex, it's two swales and a pond. So there's different kinds of facilities, but those facilities, we own about 13 of them, but across the city, there's close to 200.
And the issue with those has to do with where that material lines up, how it, how it's incorporated into our overall drainage?
Correct. Those stormwater facilities, if they're not maintained correctly, they fail to perform the function that they were designed for. So instead of reducing pollutant loads, if they're not maintained correctly, they can actually contribute to it, and they're supposed to be reducing that. So that's the goal, is to keep these things functioning so that they do reduce the pollution load.
And that's a part of the, the oversight that we would provide in terms of?
Correct. Correct.
Mr. Stevens, the mayor had to leave, so I can have him. What, what do we have in terms of?
Oh, well, looking at today for, for this particular topic?
Once again, I mean, now, now we're less, you know...
We're getting down, we're all wagging, sir.
We're less, down, down to, we're missing three, I guess. So, you know, I, I feel that we need some direction whether you wish to move forward with this ultimately. Whether y'all feel comfortable with doing that with just four of you here, I don't know, but we do need direction as to whether or not this is going to be something we need to incorporate in this year's stormwater utility fund or not.
Well, let me ask you something, that, your project list that you have there, Amanda, what, is that your hard prioritization of potential projects?
No, sir. That's just a handful of the ones that kind of popped to the immediate forefront when we were putting this together. I think there's probably other projects out there. One of the things too, that needs to be done for compliance with the Phase II, is that stormwater inventory, and getting that complete and accurate information of where the stormwater infrastructure is. One of the things that will be done as part of that is we will be able to do some minor modeling of some of the troublesome areas and come up with a good, solid solution that solves the problem in that area, and also make sure that we don't move that problem from here to over here, or what have you. So our list of projects is not, that is not a final project list.
Just, just, just give Amanda two real quickly, that, you know, these problem areas that you have, let's say Frog Pond, you know, what's the pavement condition over there? You know, because ultimately, when you have leaky or non-draining stormwater utility issues in, in, in an area such as that, ultimately, it destroys your subgrade, your base, and then ultimately, you lose your asphalt. And that's kind of what you see in places where you have poor drainage problems, you have cave-ins, you have sinkholes, you have all these kinds of issues that exacerbate. The, the thing of it is with our maintenance, I mean, literally, it's, it's ditches and making sure the pipes are, are, are clear enough to allow water to flow through them. It's nothing more than that. It's all that was set up at us, you know, we first set this up.
So are we talking about doing some camera work? Is that to, to assess this, or how do you work that in terms of doing a survey to better understand and identify?
I don't know that we would do camera work necessarily. It's generally a survey grade.
Inverts?
Inverts, top elevations, pipe sizes. That's generally what it would include.
I, I don't think the four of us would be comfortable with three missing to, to do any action today, so can we come back to Mr. Stevens, your, your, whenever you think you put a stick, stump it back in as an agenda item, do you have a workshop sometime in the next 30 days or so? Is that soon enough, or are you concerned?
Well, absolutely. Or the other option would be is to come to you during the budget workshops, even though you will have a budget at that point that says, here's this. But we really should consider that, because the majority, like I said, is complying with the staff requirement, which would not be able to hire that position until July 1 anyways. And then the other one is identifying the capital improvement projects, which is part two. And then number three, that would be the only caveat, is, is the shared services and pilot, but we can adjust those once the budget is kind of done at that point. So I mean, we, we can do that to finalize the budget and fix that. So either one of those points, if you want it sooner, I'll get it before you, before you sooner, I mean, we, you're gonna get the same PowerPoint in that presentation probably as you would now.
Is the board, remaining board comfortable going that way, come back instead of trying to sort of get the same things?
We'd rather do it sooner than later, just so it saves things.
Right, but I think we need everybody here to, talking about that, and then agrees.
So in two weeks, or you want to?
Sure.
So, so two weeks? All right, so, are you getting first, first, with this first meeting in April? Is that right? Was it Tuesday? Actually, we can do it in that second meeting in March. Your choice. We'll do the second meeting in March, 22nd.
Where do we keep the work session on the 15th?
Tuesday, and that's the last order of business. So this, this, so we've got our direction here on stormwater, so this is our last order of business. We, as staff, don't specifically have anything unless you want to cover. I think the board did mention that they might want to discuss possible standards for the habitat on their homes at some point in a work session, that we'd want to have Mark there there, but that's the only thing.
I think the folks we've lost today, we probably need to, you got the last item there was the work session, and we, everybody has an invite, the board has an invite for the homeowners market on Tuesday, so.
Okay. I'd like to motion, I'd like to motion we cancel our scheduled work session Tuesday night.
Motion from Alvin Odom, to cancel Tuesday, and seconded by Alderman Taylor. Any further discussion, comments, Mr. Stevens?
Uh, no, sir. The only thing is if anybody has any other topic, I did have it on the agenda, it may be a little bit late, we said we're gonna try to, try to adjourn by two today so that everybody can go, but if there's any other discussion or, or things that you want us to look at over the next?
Okay, we got a motion, we need to go down on this, but we can, we can do that. Comments from board?
None of that.
Okay, go ahead, roll call on that.
What do we, what do we?
Cancel.
Oh, cancel, I'm sorry.
Alderman, Allen?
Yes.
Alderman Schaubel?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Personneblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens, what was the last item?
Last item was, any, any other topics that the board wished to discuss while you've got us here, and, or direction for us to go with that?
I would like for staff to look into the possibility of a consent agenda for our regular meetings, not to include anything that requires financial decisions, but if it's street closure, or a call for a public hearing, or basically your quote-unquote rubber stamp type items, instead of us having to do those kind of on the fly, as we've done recently, I think we could look to have those on the consent agenda, I think we'd make our meetings flow smoother and save staff some time as well.
I would agree.
Okay. Here's your action, Mr. Stevens. Okay, we have to do that. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yes.
I had explained, but we keep talking, like, we look at the Days Inn, like, we may have to tear it down. We look at funds needed for the parking deck. Is there some kind, as we're looking at the robust general fund, I mean, the fund balance that we have, is there any way we could come up with possible expenditures we may be looking at this year, major ones that we haven't budgeted for, like the Days Inn? And it may not happen, but just sort of keep it on mind that these things are gonna come down the pipe.
Uh, yes, and I think that's part of the project report that I gave y'all like two weeks ago, I'm planning on bringing to you again. I want to make sure it with JR. I think we, what we might do is provide just an Excel summary sheet of those, it's a whole lot of data, doesn't have the description as much, or where we are in the progress and everything else, but maybe just a, an overall list of, as the board approves a project, $210,000 goes there. As the project goes here, $400,000, and we'll say where it's coming, debt finance, you know, where it's coming from. General fund balance, you put GFB or something, so we'll, we'll, JR get together, we can work on something like that.
And as well as things that may, we may have to consider down the road.
Sure.
Anything else? You have a comment or a question? I'd like to thank Mr. Stevens and staff for, for working the retreat together today and the topics and the preparation, and if members of the desire, maybe send the city manager a little feedback on what you liked, what you didn't like, what you preferred, all that kind of stuff, give him more guidance for the future. Okay? Okay, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yes.
Do we need? Okay, have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Alvin Odom, seconded by Alvin Taylor. Alvin, say aye.